Next level.
Welcome, everyone, to the Aspen City Council Work Session. It is 4:00 PM on Monday evening, April 21st. And our first item up is the Wheeler Opera House 2026 Programming. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mike Harrington, Executive Director of the Wheeler Opera House. I will share my screen. There we go. Great, thank you for taking some time to chat today or listen to discuss potential programming philosophy and strategy for 2026 at the Wheeler Opera House. I'd start with just some general context. I'm sure you're very familiar with this, so I won't spend too much time on it. But just a reminder of the mission of the Wheeler. It's multi-pronged, has to do with preserving the viability of the venue, of course, but then also activating that venue through performances that speak to our residents, our guests, and of course, the artists and performers that we invite. It's a multidisciplinary venue. We do everything from comedy to music to theater, dance, film, lecture, kind of everything in between. And full seating configuration allows for 501 seats, though the typical capacity is generally between 460 and 476. Just share those numbers because we are going to get into a little bit of math, so those won't be foreign. So since I've arrived back in September of '27, this is kind of, excuse me, '24, September of 2024. What I have heard from council, from residents, from the city manager's office, from lots of people in the community, is really three priorities for the Wheeler. One is there's a desire for high-profile, established world-class artists to visit our city and to be a part of that wonderful venue's history. Number two, for the venue to be very active. It doesn't do anyone any good if it just sits like a museum, so it's about activating it and bringing it to life with a greater volume of use that's balanced between community use, curated programming, kind of everything that falls in between. And then third is that the Wheeler really functioned as the center of Aspen's cultural community through robust series of partnerships, relationships, collaborations, co-presentations, what have you. The idea, the visual that we've been using is that the Wheeler Opera House is truly the center of Aspen's cultural wheel and that everything moves around and that the resources of the Wheeler elevate the entire community. We're going to talk about programming, and so I did want to just take a second, as I mentioned in the memo, to just reiterate that a commitment to programming is really an investment. It's an investment that's quite layered. It's an investment in the brand of the city of Aspen. It's an investment in the brand of the Wheeler Opera House. It's an investment in community building and in community health. It's actually an area where there's a lot of science and research being done and how the performing arts help not just mental health, but also physical health. It's an investment in education. The Wheeler's outreach and educational matinee series has been growing. It's something we just started really this past year. We've gotten tremendous response and positive feedback from the school districts that we are working with, and of course, in its investment in the local economy. When people come to see a show at the Wheeler, not only are they purchasing a ticket, but there's a high chance that they are going out to dinner, that they're paying for a babysitter, that they're parking, that maybe they're doing drinks after. So it's an investment in the local economy to keep the Wheeler active and vibrant. So far, in 2025, this is what we have experienced. We opened the theater on January 16th after a month's long rigging project, and now projected through the end of April, these numbers do count these last few days of April, we are expected to see 36 days of community use that ranges from Aspen Country Day School that was just there last week to Aces that did a lecture event back in February, and so on and so forth, as well as 35 days of Wheeler presenting activity. I don't want to get too deep into terminology of my field, but presenting means we pay an artist to come here, that artist generally has a show that is finished, it's a finished product, we bring them here to share it with our community, and then we retain the box office. Of those 35 days so far this year, we've had 10 sold-out events. The community has really responded favorably to the programming. We've welcomed more than 11,000 audience members, about an average of 340, which is very high for a venue of this size. We have already reached 197% of the revenue projection for 2025, and we've got eight months left to go, so we're doing very well there. The Wheeler Insiders was a program that relaunched. It's about access for locals, access and affordability for locals. We've had 585 local residents sign up for that program so far in these first four months. And as I said before, we've done a good job in establishing baseline partnerships with many of the other cultural organizations in town, including some of those listed there.
Mike, question on that?
Yes, sir.
How much of the 197%, roughly, is attributable to the Seinfeld events?
Little less than half.
Oh, that's great.
Can we hold all the questions until the end of the presentation? Just keep track of them as we go?
Sure.
Thank you. Please, continue.
Sure. All right, so now looking into 2026, and this reiterates what I had shared in the memo. This is just a rough outline, kind of a sketch, of what the cadence of programming, both Wheeler presentations as well as community partners and rental events that use the space. I've learned firsthand here from January, February, March, and April. The rest is a bit of a projection based on information I've been provided, based on some historical data, what I understand the trends to be here in town. This is a rough outline. I can go into detail, but all this was all in the memo as well, and I can always circle back to it if you have questions. Those are the first six months, and then our second six months, again, trying to ebb and flow with the population in town, heavier programming, especially presenting activity during February and March, as well as September, and once we get into the holidays. Otherwise, trying to, never going dark. I don't think that's a good look for the space, and I don't think it's difficult to regain people's attention. So we always want to remain active, but we want to be very strategic about it and how we're remaining active, whether we're utilizing the vault for activity during the off-season, like with this Roaring Fork Rising series that we have coming up in May, or whether we're using the vault in the summer when the Aspen Music Festival and School is in the main room. So that's just a sketch. That equates to about 80 to 100 programs, presented programs throughout the year. And this is a rough breakdown, I guess, of tiers that we could attribute to the different artists that we bring into town. The majority of the programming at the Wheeler falls into Tier One and Tier Two. Most of the artists that will come in for a one-night engagement fall, you know, those artist fees are below $15,000. It's very possible and likely to recoup financially with an affordable and accessible ticket range. However, not everything sells out, but we can, you know, but there's always that possibility. And I'll share with you here in a second, with the way that I typically craft offers to artists is at least give us the opportunity to recoup at sellout, so we're being responsible with those resources. So you can see here, this is really how it breaks down. The, I think the goal of this discussion was to get some guidance from council, particularly as it relates to Tiers Three and Four. As the artists become more expensive, they generate more excitement, they are certainly more appealing to many people, however, they do become more expensive. And so then the question becomes, how do we balance? I think the question becomes, how do we balance those expenses against reasonable ticket prices that are appropriate for the market while also, you know, with one eye towards accessibility for locals? It's all about the balance. So what I've also shared here is two example offers. So what you'll see here on the left side of the screen are the standard expenses that will go into a single-night event. It's pretty straightforward. Event labor covers everything, Wheeler expenses, production, front of house, box office, and artist services. Advertising and marketing, that's an average number that we use, $3,000. Industry standard is approximately $6 per person to sell a single ticket is what you need to spend in paid advertising. So with a 500-seat venue, we tend to average around $3,000 per event. Credit card fees fluctuate based on the gross potential ticket revenue. Miscellaneous could be everything from, you know, artist services, hospitality, just kind of those, you know, those throwaway expenses that come up. And then what you see on the right side of the screen, and this was actually, I pulled this from an event that we did back in March, this was a scale where the tickets range from 35 to 62. The 35 is also the Wheeler insider price. There are about 60 seats that we've identified in the theater that are available to insiders or locals at that lowest price. They're in the highest price section, but they're available at the lowest price point. So as you can see here, the way that I generally put these together is that if we sell out, and we always hope to do that, there's a, we will recoup our costs. It doesn't always work out quite so perfectly, and we can always fluctuate, right? If we felt that financial solvency per event wasn't necessary, we could lower those ticket prices. There's flexibility. So that's one example. And then a second example goes to the other end of the spectrum. This would be an example of a Tier Four artist, kind of the most expensive level of artists. This is still actually a pretty reasonable fee for an artist of that caliber, and in this case, again, I showed an illustrative ticket scaling that would allow us to recoup at sellout with a pretty wide range of ticket prices. This is similar to what we did for the Seinfeld, Jerry Seinfeld event, but not exact. Again, just two examples. And I think what we're looking, what I'm hoping for here is some guidance as we begin the 2026 budgeting process, and I can start having conversations with artists and know what council would like us to do at the Wheeler.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Council members, questions? Bill, did you want to start?
I have no more questions, just comments.
Okay.
If you want to do questions first.
Thank you. Anybody else have, Sam?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. My questions refer to Tier Three and Four and just, I was sort of watching this and wondering if a percentage was, I mean, you presented us doing percentage, but I think a Tier Three and Four artist is as you can get them sort of situation. Like, can you get unlimited Tier Three and Four artists if you wanted to with unlimited money anyway? Or do you really need to limit to 10%? And I can just give you guidance to say, get as many as you can up to a certain percent?
Yeah, unlimited is unlikely.
Yeah.
Just because it is only 500 seats, and we are competing with the Live Nations and the AEGs of the world that put together tours that, you know, go around to stadiums and arenas and whatnot. So unlimited is unlikely. You know, with enough advanced planning, though, and enough resources allocated, I think we could probably do as many as we wanted to.
Well, and with that, you say 10%. But is 10% your conservative number? Or should I, like, suggest, like, up to 15, up to 20, and use your discretion to get ones that are great, not just because we have the money?
Yeah. I would say 10% is very doable, right? And because 10%, assuming, again, 100 events for the year, right? We're talking five possibly at that very highest tier.
Yeah.
It's probably one for Laugh Festival, it's probably one, maybe two around the holidays, it's probably one somewhere in February, and then, you know, in a strategic moment in either July or September or somewhere in that time. So I would say that the 10% that I've recommended is viable.
Thank you. I mean, I think from the information you just told me, I would say something to the council, like, up to 15% might be better. I just want to give you that wiggle room that if there's like an artist that's, that you can get to come here and you're at the 10%, I'd say, go get that artist, rather than be like, it's not a hard cap. That's, like, everything else you presented makes sense to me. I know you know your business and how to run the show. I just want to make sure that you feel a little loose with these numbers, that if there's good opportunities, you go get them, and you don't think, oh, God, I'm at 10%. I can't go further.
Yeah, good comment, Sam. I had a question that was similar to that as well. Did you have another question?
No, that was question and comment there, so.
Christine?
Thank you. This is great. Well done. I know you're looking to us for programming feedback, but curious if the termination with the co-agreement, the co-presentation agreement with Belly Up, is that affecting how you're thinking about programming the rest of the year? Or does it in terms of artists and?
It doesn't.
Okay.
It hasn't had any impact on this, on kind of the cadence that I've proposed, or some of the larger milestones throughout the year. I think, as I've said before, and I guess you weren't, I'm sorry you weren't here, in the seat, conversations with the Belly Up about co-presentations are active, and we will continue to find those opportunities when they're, when they're right.
All right, thanks. Thank you. I have a series of questions as well, and greatly appreciate the work there at the Wheeler. For the public who's viewing, we have a contract with the music festival for their performances of opera in the summer, and so that's part of why you're not pursuing the programming in the summer, per se.
Correct. It's why we're not, we're not pursuing a high volume of programming in the main theater. We are, we're being creative, we're thinking creatively this summer.
I think that's great. I think that's absolutely great. I wanted to make sure we were going to bring back the Wheeler programming at a locals' price for New Year's Eve. That was not able this year because of the rigging work, and I understand that, and I had a lot of people ask me about that. But going into town has gotten so expensive for the locals, that this was always a great little treat, and it was something that, you know, in the old days, you used to at least be able to go into a bar, and it wasn't a $50 cover charge. But now, every, every place that serves beverages or food has a cover charge. And so I think that having an event for the locals at the Wheeler on New Year's Eve has always been a really nice thing, and people watch the fireworks in the early show or the late show from the window. So just put that out there, and I'll give you all my questions, and then you can respond if you'd like, or, you know, I just want you and your board to contemplate that. I had down unexpected opportunities in my list of, if there's new tours that are announced or other community bookings, to be able to exceed the suggested programming. And if there's nights that aren't taken, are we making a calendar available to the community of people who one-off can bring in a great speaker or something like that and want to know when we might have availability to book and use the Wheeler? Kind of advertising, or at least having a calendar of open days at some point. I appreciate very much you telling us the artist cost and breaking that down a little bit, their lodging and their needs to travel and come here. Are we making any deals with any of the hotels to try to get a discounted rate when they're bringing in a Wheeler Star, going to have a Wheeler Star staying with them or a traveling crew? And I don't know if this is just a longer-term idea to work with and talk to your board about, but how about trying to create some sort of benefactor ticket for some of those higher-priced Tier Four shows, so that some people could receive some recognition for the work that they're doing to help support the Wheeler and make it more affordable for others and things like that? And then the final question I actually had was, your memo closes with the target is roughly a 40% subsidy rate, and I was wondering, what does that equate to in dollars?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I will run through, I do have answers. First of all, yes, New Year's Eve, absolutely. I've got an offer, I'm holding a date with an artist right now. The focus is on multi-generational, affordable, high-quality programming for that night in particular. I was in New Year's Eve this past year with my 13-year-old son, and I experienced it firsthand. There were very few places where we could go and enjoy the night, so that is, that is an absolute yes. With regards to being able to take advantage of unexpected opportunities, the, what I've proposed here in terms of the cadence, it's more about, again, just that cadence that we'll look to follow in terms of volume and frequency. Some of those events will be booked a year in advance, some of them will be booked three months out, some might be booked a month, but that's really about it, especially when you start dealing with higher-profile artists. Generally, their schedules are quite programmed, but yes, we will absolutely continue to be fluid in how we're evaluating what opportunities are available at the Wheeler. And it's, I guess, a similar answer for the, for your questions about the community requests or available nights. We currently don't have, so we, we have a, an event management system that we now use. We just implemented it really this year. It helps us manage the calendar in a much more efficient way. As of right now, there is no public-facing component of that. The only public-facing component is the Wheeler website, where Aspen ShowTix, which will show you the public events that are happening in the space. We have a hope and a plan for a website redesign in 2026, and as part of that, we may look to see what kind of view-only options might be available with our event management system so a way the public can see availability in real time. However, it is, we are a short email or phone call away. Our rentals coordinator speaks with members of the community almost daily about available dates and what people are interested in doing, so that's certainly something we will continue to.
Yeah, and I realize that sometimes there's one show night, but that doesn't mean there's two, not two rehearsal nights beforehand and setup and things like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing that. The production team thanks you as well. Let's see, lodging, accommodations. So we do have, we have negotiated rates with Limelight, Aspen Meadows, Hotel Jerome, and The Hoffman down in Basalt. We are, I've suggested that we get a little deeper into those conversations. We put most of our artists actually at the Limelight. Hotel Jerome, on occasion, will be very cooperative with us and give us a great deal for some larger groups sometimes. But we shop around every single time. Our biggest obstacle is less the number of partners that we have and the availability of rooms, it's about the seasonality of the costs. So New Year's Eve, to your example, I mean, no matter where we put someone, the cost is very high for those, for those, for those lodgings and accommodations. But we are looking to deepen those relationships and try to be as efficient and resourceful as we can with the dollars that we have available to us.
Thank you.
The benefactor ticket idea, it's, it's a great idea. It gets us into, a little bit into the fundraising world, which is not a department that exists currently at the Wheeler. It's something I have experience with, and certainly something we can look at moving forward. We did something kind of similar with the Jerry Seinfeld event where we had that top ticket price. There was a private reception that was connected to that top ticket price. And that top ticket price then also helped to offset and make the, the insider prices what they could be.
Perfect.
So we, we were experimenting in that space with how to becoming kind of a bona fide benefactor program. And then your last question with, with regards to the, the 40%. So the 40% number, the reason that I brought this in and actually connected to fundraising, my experience working in the nonprofit space in, in other markets is that most performing arts centers will endeavor to have a 60% earned revenue versus 40% contributed revenue ratio when looking at the revenues needed to, to pay for their seasons. That's what I've presented here. It's kind of this industry standard 40% contributed revenue or subsidy, whatever terminology we'd like to use. Can't place an exact dollar amount on it because we are really in the beginning stages of that budget creation process. But I think the guidance that we receive here will help us be able to articulate clearly, will be able to articulate a, an exact number.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And in many ways, the Wheeler Ret Fund was the original benefactor program for that. And I'm not opposed to subsidy amounts. I was just kind of wondering, and we can look at that during the budget season as you go forward. And did anyone else have any new questions from the dialogue?
Just comments.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I felt the same way you did about, you know, not feeling as constrained to stay under 10% if opportunities come forward. Bill, your comments, Sam?
Thanks. Mike, thank you. Great presentation. I can't wait to see sort of what you continue to do here with, with this program. I'm supportive of it. I'm supportive of all the comments from this table so far. I would like you to see, to see you make some improvement to the ticketing platform. I've shared with you some frustrations and difficulties that I've had with it. I, I don't think that it's best in class and would like it to be best in class. I, yeah, really look forward to continued great work from you and, and I'm excited to have you onboard. I think that's it. Thanks.
John?
Yeah. Sorry. Your presentation very thorough. Made perfect sense to me, the way it mirrors the ebb and flow of the population of our town and how many tourists we have here. I agree with what Sam brought up, if there's some Wheeler room to add more shows, but I think that was kind of built into your presentation. Anyway, it's nothing set in stone.
I feel really positive about the way, the direction the Wheeler's going after COVID. Things were dark for a while. So I really appreciate all the effort you've put into this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Christine or Sam?
Yeah. Thank you again. Everything you've presented looks good. I am in support of more marquee events, which is what you've heard from the community. I think that is one area that we can improve on, of which you've noted. I was at one of the family events this, the Dogman musical this spring. It was great. So I think making sure that we're somewhere in the middle of what Belly Up is doing, people that are going Down Valley for some of the events at Takaw and that we're able to fill that gap in terms of programming, that's what I'd like to see. But otherwise, thank you.
Sam?
Yeah. Thank you. I, I hope we gave you the flexibility you need to use your strengths. And I look forward to seeing especially all the events that you bring forward and the marquee ones and knowing that we have your back as far as going out there sometimes and trying to experiment with some big-name artists and up-and-comers and all the above.
Great.
Thank you. I agree with everyone's comments and really appreciate your answers to the questions. I, I remember back in the day when sometimes we'd get really marquee named talent who were just warming up their show to take it on tour. And they just love the venue itself and a great, was it Lilian Tomlin or others? And so greatly appreciate that. And I am in full support of this moving forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
The next item on our agenda is the West of Aspen Transportation Needs Study Update. Let's see. Jen is up here as a staff presenter and you'll introduce our other presenters.
Bear with us as we get set up here. All righty. Good evening or good afternoon. My name is Jen Newton. I'm a senior project manager in the city manager's office. With me this evening is Doug Stremmel and Jim Clark from Jacobs Engineering. I'd also note that Lynn Rumbaugh, our interim transportation director, is in the audience. I'd like to highlight that the presentation this afternoon will provide insights into existing conditions, some modeling of traffic impacts, an origin and destination study, and some public input. And we're going to begin the update with a brief review of the history of the project for the benefit of the new folks who have joined council. And with that, I will hand it over to Jim.
Thanks, Jen. Bear with me.
Rachel, you mind if I ask one thing before we get started?
Yeah, please, Bill.
Thanks so much. Jen, would you mind sort of framing for us? Was it really in the memo? What are you looking for from us so that I can keep that in mind as we go through this?
I think we have just a single question at the end and it's related to the limits of the study moving forward if we were to pursue a new EIS. I think primarily this is intended to be an update of where we are and to provide some information about the traffic impacts. You know, for example, usage of the roundabout, just some, reporting out a little bit of the data that we've gotten. So just one question.
Thank you. And that is like, how big should we make the EIS? What should we do with it, right? Okay. Thank you.
Mary Richards, members of council, thanks for the opportunity to come back and talk to you about the transportation issues, particularly surrounding the entrance to Aspen. Jen touched on the agenda, but I'll just walk through briefly. Background and history, we're going to touch on some of the coordination we've done with CDOT and FHWA. Preside some information on purpose and need and available data on transportation needs that you see listed there. We recently had a stakeholder workshop and as we just talked about, we wanted to have a discussion about potential project limits and finish with some upcoming meetings that we have. So starting with background and history, I personally had known about the entrance to Aspen that was completed in 98 for years. I was frankly unaware of the previous EISs on the corridor. And starting with the Carbondale East EIS, which was completed in 82, that was followed by the East of Basalt to Buttermilk EIS, which was completed in 93. And as noted here to the bottom of the screen, the entrance to Aspen, EIS Rod, was completed in 98. And that's that, including with the preferred alternative or a series of improvements, many of which have been implemented, some of which have been not. This slide here shows what could be considered the last major phase that has not been completed. About two years ago, the city was looking to move ahead with implementing a lot of these, frankly, all of these improvements, which would involve realigning State Highway 82. It would include constructing the slam bridge, seeing sort of in that middle slide mid-ground and building a brand-new bridge over Castle Creek and tying in with Main Street in a more direct fashion or alignment. And about two years, the city council opted to pause on advancing these improvements and give more study to looking at the existing State Highway 82. And we were asked to conduct a series of studies which are listed here. I won't touch in, on each of these in, in turn or detail, but just to give a flavor, back in spring of last year, we were asked to prepare a feasibility report for the bridge. We looked at rehabilitation options for the existing bridge as well as replacement options, both two- and three-lane bridge replacement options. We looked at different ways to improve the S-curves, both with widening and different, different types of dedicated transit. We prepared a traffic model, prepared a traffic memo, looking at various alternatives. We looked at ways to fund future improvements and conducted an economic impact analysis really focused on the construction phase. What would the economic impacts from that construction phase look like? And lastly, we prepared several memos that looked at different ways to clear different improvements or alternatives through the NEPA process.
And more recently, related to the Castle Creek Bridge itself, CDOT did a reinspection of the bridge this past fall. And they re-inspected the deck, substructure and superstructure. And they found all those elements to be in fair condition, meaning they're all structurally sound. And there's no safety concerns and the next reinspection is in 2026.
So over the last few years, the project team, city staff have been in coordination with CDOT and FHWA. That's really taken the form of three different letters where city staff has posed different questions to CDOT and FHWA related to the entrance to Aspen and the previous rod and preferred alternative. The latest response letter that we received was September of last year. And in response to specific pointed questions from staff, CDOT and FHWA reaffirmed that a new EIS would be required if a three-lane shifted bridge replacement option on existing alignment or a splitshot alternative was advanced by the city if that alternative was intended to replace the PA. And shortly thereafter, city staff directed, excuse me, city council directed staff to begin work on initiating either a new EIS or a supplemental EIS. That was followed up last year. So in November, CDOT and FHWA reached out to us for a meeting, the purpose of which was to get alignment if the city opted to propose a new EIS to establish what they deemed or called EIS ground rules. They did at that meeting express some concerns about what they see as divided community sentiment, about what to do at the entrance. And they noted staffing constraints on the FHWA end. And I'll note that since that November meeting, their constraints have just gotten worse. They lost, because of some of the changes at the federal level, about a third of their staff in the local division office. So they're more constrained now than they were. And lastly, they did note that for a new EIS, they would expect Down Valley participation for stakeholders and public outreach. So key messages, CDOT and FHWA indicated that a new EIS would require strong, dated, driven purpose and need. And ultimately that they are the decision-makers when it comes to what to do with the rod and the corridor. So in relation to a data-driven purpose and need and a potential new EIS, that's what we've been spending our efforts on the last few months, look, taking a fresh look really at transportation needs on the State Highway 82 corridor. And before we share what we've found and some of the input that we've received, just some information about what a purpose and need statement is. And it is, as noted in the slide, foundational to a project. It establishes why the agency is proposing the project and why it's needed. It serves as the basis for the range of alternatives in an EIS that are considered. And it serves as the measuring stick by which alternatives are evaluated. Guidance that we as NEPA practitioners follow when we're developing purpose and need. That purpose identifies what the project is intended to achieve, but important to note, it does not specify the solution. The purpose needs, needs to clearly define the transportation problems and those problems need to be supported by relevant data. It can also include what we might call goals or other objectives that are related to the transportation purpose. And lastly, that purpose and need statement should be concise and understandable to the layperson and general public. So with that, we're going to touch on some of the, the available data on transportation needs that we've compiled.
And so Jim mentioned that, you know, we need to see, identify what the transportation problems are and, and have data that validates that. So firstly, we're going to start with traffic and transit. And just basically, the upper right chart shows Castle Creek Bridge traffic volumes over the last 25 years from 1999 through 2024 is basically, or 2023, is basically trending down slightly. And then if, the bottom right graph kind of shows each month annual daily traffic compared to 1999. So on average, 1999, 2023 is a solid blue and 1999 is the dashed blue. And so Ju- July is still your peak volume month. Okay? So this is what we know from the traffic. It's trending down a little bit and July is still your peak.
Just hold on that for a second. Through the elected officials transportation committee, a traffic counter was installed on Power Plant Road this fall or December. And yet I don't believe we still have gotten any reliable data from that because for me, the traffic count is inaccurate by, you know, if it's 2,000 cars a day, it could be off by 10%. And that is really necessary for us to really understand this problem.
So we've taken a look at that and as I understand, the recor counters are, they think they got the calibration figured out now on Power Plant Road. So we can start taking a look at those numbers a little closer. But we still think if you took that volume, which we've estimated it to be about 1,300 cars a day on Power Plant Road, if you add that to that, it's still lower than the 1993 volumes. So this chart is just strictly showing across the bridge. But yeah, we'll take a look at that counter data when that's available.
And the other thing I'd appreciate as we will probably have continued dialogue and questions is in the future, is when the Bus Rapid Transit System went into effect? I've always been told by Pete Rice, as he was leaving, the single largest drop we saw in traffic crossing the Castle Creek Bridge was when BRT went into effect.
And that's apparent by the drop from 1993.
Okay. Thank you.
So those vehicles that are crossing the Castle Creek Bridge, you know, we were able to look at some of the record data video, via the video and pull some data from that in December of 2024. So you can see 66% of the light vehicles or passenger cars or motorcycles, while 28% are medium-type vehicles or service vehicles. So generally, majority of those might be service vehicles. In fact, when we were coming into town today, there was three service vehicles in front of us and, and one behind us. So, you know, there's a demand for service vehicles in the town. But that's kind of the vehicle types that are coming into the town. What we also took a look at is the OD study, an origin destination study. So the upper-left chart is a pie chart of origins. And those origins start at, basically at 12 o'clock, if you look at the 7% I-70 west of Glenwood. And if you go clockwise around, it gets closer to Aspen, so 11% being Cemetery Lane. So a majority of the traffic, you know, is coming from Glenwood Springs, 12%. You got 23% coming from Elgabelle and Basalt. And the destinations these, these travelers are going is 25% to the Garmisch Street area and 25% to the Mill Street area. And then, you know, 8% on past and east of Aspen. So you can, this is helpful because then we can also look at, well, where are they crossing when they come into town? Well, you have the one bridge, but you also have Power Plant Road. So if you look at the pie chart on the right, we see that in the AM inbound peak, there's, there's 15% crossing on Power Plant Road. So they're taking McLean Flats Road and bypassing State Highway 82 to get into town. This tells us there's a congestion problem, that people aren't waiting to clear out. They're, they're taking their own route into town, while 85% continue on across the bridge.
Can you leave that up one more second? I'm sorry, it's just so small. You're looking at 23% from Elgabelle Basalt, 12% from Carbondale, 12% from Glenwood Springs, and 1% east of Glenwood Springs going that way and 70% west of. So that's well over 50% of the traffic is roughly from without, outside of Picken County.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, some of the Basalt are in Picken County, but just, just an observation. Bill?
Thanks. Curious how you get this data.
So this is from our streetlight analysis that we did. So we use streetlights software, and it's a, they use algorithms, they measure vehicles that are coded, that send signals, and they, we build the data from that set.
So-called connected vehicles.
Connected vehicles, yes.
Interesting.
Oh, John?
So you suspect the 11% from Cemetery Lane is actually coming from farther Down Valley?
Yes, and we'll show you a little bit better detail on that here in another couple of slides.
Thanks.
Okay. So then if we look at the PM peak period outbound, what happens is you still have origins and destinations, upper-left, lower-left, and then if you look at the pie chart on the right, 34% are using Power Plant Road to bypass the queue to get out of town. Okay? So that's a lot of west-end traffic, right? So again, a symptom of congestion, people don't want to wait, they want to find their way out of town. And it's limited with just the one Castle Creek Bridge.
And 12% is the Red Mountain neighborhood? And when you say original curve, original street, are you talking about, so east of Aspen?
Yeah, just on, just east of Mill, there, a couple of blocks, yeah, where it kind of turns.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh. So if we look a little closer at the data for the inbound, we talked about the inbound coming in. So there's about 29% really traveling McLean Flats Road, a third of the volume coming in on McLean Flats Road. But what they do is they, 15% turn down Power Plant Road, while another 14% come up to the signal and rejoins State Highway 82 to cross the bridge. So this is, this was really enlightening when we looked at this data, because it tells us we have a, we know we have a congestion problem, but you can see it in the data. This supports the problem, okay? If you look at the outbound, a third, or 34%, are making their way to Power Plant Road to get out of town in the PM peak. So a majority of them, 19% will turn left at Cemetery Lane and rejoin State Highway 82, while 15% will continue on McLean Flats Road. That's joined by another 4% that turn off of State Highway 82, so that makes 19%. So you can see, these are, these are all the people that bypass in congestion. This was another unique analysis we looked at with our streetlight data. It's the Maroon Creek Roundabout itself, and this kind of shows, what we want to show in this graphic here, is we looked at February 2024, we looked at pickups and drop-offs down Maroon Creek and Castle Creek Road in the AM and PM peak periods, okay? So about 800 drop-offs in the AM, and then about 565 drop-offs in the, or pickups in the PM. But this shows the strain or the usage of the roundabout. So there's an orange, solid orange line in there, and that contributes to 43% that who make one loop through the roundabout. Basically, these people live in downtown Aspen, and they come through the roundabout, they make a drop-off, and they return back, or they pick up and then return back into town, okay?
And is that AM or just throughout the day?
It's AM and PM.
Okay, thank you.
And then 21% who live in downtown Aspen make one and a half loops through the roundabout, meaning they come through the roundabout, they go down either Maroon Creek or Castle Creek, do a drop-off or pickup, and then they continue back down Down Valley. Okay, so that's extra strain or congestion in the roundabout. And there's some people who just make a half a loop, which would just be, you're staying one directional through the roundabout, okay? Or there's also people who come in, who live Down Valley, and make a drop-off, pickup, and head back Down Valley. That's one loop also, okay? So these were just some select sites we showed you, but there were some other data we found out with transit and stuff like that. So we're just going to highlight some of those key findings. Transit is heavily used to get into and out of Aspen, but not always convenient. Non-continuous bus lanes lead to transit delay with mixed traffic. That also leads to general traffic delay as well. For general traffic, the bottlenecks contribute to large queues and travel delays, leading to the queue jumpers. Congestion encourages queue jumpers. So inbound and outbound commuters use McLean Flats Road, which is not intended for heavy traffic, and there's some safety data on that we'll talk about, too. Outbound queue jumpers cause congestion in west-end neighborhoods via Power Plant Road. So also, seasonal traffic mixes with commuter traffic at Maroon Creek Roundabout. So specifically, school traffic, single bell schedule, that's contributing to extra traffic at the roundabout. The winter ski traffic is heavy there, as well as summer visitor and residential traffic. So there's some seasonal fluctuations there, too.
So in looking at transportation needs, we also looked at system redundancy, emergency response, and emergency evacuation. We looked at a handful of different studies relative, and plans related to hazard assessment, emergency service response, emergency evacuation. We had a meeting and interviewed emergency service providers, and this slide just touches on our key findings, and none of it, I think, would be surprising to this council. Congestion on 82 and the lack of redundancy do result in delayed emergency response times. What we're hearing from folks is that when State Highway 82 is backed up, particularly in the entrance to Aspen area, around the bridge area, the sirens don't really work because they, there's no space for them to get around those queues. And secondly, long evacuation times associated with different modeling that the city has done, and information that we got from the emergency service providers for them. In the event of a wildfire or some other hazard, it would take quite a long time to evacuate the city. And lastly, that, you know, the problems will worsen with traffic increases, new development, and with climate change.
So we also looked at safety, which is a very important component of any highway system. So the data we looked at was between, the crash data we looked at was between 2015 and 2024, and it was both city data as well as CDOT data, and these points are geolocated, so we can drop them in on a map and see where all the accidents are. So what this map is, is basically from the airport on into town to the Mill Street area there. And what we're showing is some segment crashes. There's been 760 segment crashes. 31 of them are of an injury or fatal type of incident. The crash types are rear ends, side swipes, and those involving vulnerable road users or pets and bikes. And there's really, it's not a lot of weather-related crashes, it's a lot during the day and dry weather, and that's symptomatic of congestion. So rear ends are symptomatic of congestions, and daytime crashes can be symptomatic of congestion as well. And what really this graph is showing is the crashes, as you get into town, the frequency increases as you get into Aspen, okay? So starting at the airport, the light blue, zero to nine crashes per year per mile, all the way to the red at, into town there, or the orange, reddish-orange dodge, 27 to 45 crashes per year per mile. So it's heavier crashes in there, and a lot of those are at the intersections.
Was there a higher concentration of the vulnerable users, more within town?
Yeah, there were within, more within town. There was a fatality recently in December out there near the, in and Aspen across, at night, State Highway 82. But yeah, as you get into town, especially at Mill Street, there's some heavy pedestrian activity. We also saw there, at, near the Ruby Park Transit Center, the, the street.
Durant?
Durant, yes, thank you. There's a lot of, you know, pet activity in that area as well that incidents popped up on. So some of the key safety findings were, traffic crashes progressively worsen as you get into Aspen, crash rates higher than similar highways. So that means there, countermeasures are recommended to improve safety, because it's trending above what is expected. Congestion is the primary cause. High intersection crash rates in town and near Ruby Park Transit Center, higher crash and injury rates with pedestrians at those locations. And the McLean Flats Road diversion, again, that's not intended for heavy traffic, but there's, but the condition on State Highway 82 is causing people to divert, and there's accidents occurring along that route as well, and we pulled county data to validate that. So we also took a look at infrastructure condition. We all, you know, we, one of the driving factors was the fair condition of the Castle Creek Bridge, but we wanted to look at what other infrastructure was aging out there. So we, so our study limits, again, were for them from the airport on in. We have several bridges and underpasses in that location, and a couple of them are in fair condition. The Castle Creek Bridge, the Maroon Creek Bridge is also in fair condition, even though it's a newer bridge, but I think it's just related to some, just some deck wearing that needs repaired or maintained. And then there's one pet underpass that could use some improvements as well. So some of the key findings on infrastructure, we looked at structures and pavements. Basically, there's a lot of aging pavement out there, especially on Main Street, and these pavement and structures all require more maintenance costs. Shoulder widths, there's some inconsistency or narrow shoulders out there that don't allow for emergency access, emergency access, or even breakdowns for vehicles, right? So we need some standardized shoulders. Bike and pet facilities, we need to promote or have some more safe crossings at some of the bus, bus drop-offs, as well as connectivity and ADA passage. The roundabout is kind of a clog in the system, but we think the geometry is contributing to delays and conflict points. And also, there's just a heavy use in that roundabout, as we showed. And then also, there's just inefficient transit lanes and facilities. So we talked about the bus lane discontinuity as you get into Aspen and as you leave Aspen, as well as at Ruby Park Transit Center, there's some inadequate staging space and out-of-direct, out-of-direction staging that contributes to longer delays in traveling, taking transit,
So in looking at transportation needs on 82, we wanted to get input from the users, the public. And so we prepared an online questionnaire. That questionnaire has been available online since early last month, early March, and we've had great response, upwards of about 350 respondents have completed the questionnaire. And this figure here shows the distribution of where those respondents or responses came from. As you would expect, you know, most came from zip codes in and near Aspen, but really good Down Valley participation, as you can see. You know, the darker shades denote the amount of responses from that particular zip code, and responses from the I-70 corridor as well. So just to touch on some of the responses, and as I go through, I won't touch on each, but I'll just note the first two or three, the top two or three responses. When asked, what statement best describes why you travel into Aspen? Majority of 37% were to commute to work, 23% was to access their house or residence in Aspen, followed by 16% for recreational purposes. Terms of mode use, traveling to and from Aspen, 55% was the most frequent, that's personal vehicle traveling alone or single occupant vehicle use, followed by 19% with carpool or driving in a personal vehicle with others, and raft-a-bus was 13%. Terms of the most important, what is most important to the respondents when they travel to and from Aspen? The top response was travel time reliability, having some assurance that you can arrive at your destination roughly when you plan to, followed by a call for faster travel times and improved safety, and emergency access and evacuation. Other important considerations for improving 82, allowing for future transportation options and technologies, reducing the number of vehicles coming to and from Aspen, and consistency with locally adopted plans. I will note, reflecting the small-town character of Aspen was also deemed important. So when folks completed the questionnaire, they were prompted to visit this interactive map. This is a screenshot, and the users could select a category. You see these listed, essentially selected an icon and plop it anyplace on State Highway 82, and they could enter a specific comment related to a need or anything, really. And the most popular comment category is, you see, listed on the left, traffic, safety, and bike-ped, and that QR code does take you to that interactive map, which is still available, is still online. In addition to soliciting input from the general public, we convened a workshop of stakeholders. You see the stakeholder organizations that were represented. This took place several weeks ago, earlier this month, and we had a great turnout. We invited folks with expertise or involvement in transportation issues within and Down Valley. This included public works, transportation folks from local agencies, transportation directors at the school district, for example. And we, after presenting information similar to what you just saw as far as transportation needs and data that we collected, we took the folks through a series of exercise, and one of those was to prioritize the transportation needs. And what the stakeholders were asked to do was to prioritize, really through a voting system, you know, what they deemed to be most important, and the responses are shown here. Most popular response was to improve transit efficiency or travel times, followed by reducing SOV use, improving multimodal options. And the next two popular were improving emergency access and response times and reducing community evacuation times. We also asked for input on community goals. We put in front of the attendees some draft community goals that we gleaned from the public survey responses, and those are shown in the first two columns to the left and center. And when asked, the participants affirmed those responses in the middle column and added some new ones that are on the far right, things like streamlining transit travel time and reliability, and providing equitable solutions.
So we talked a little bit about the needs, looking basically from the Aspen Airport on into town and the Ruby Park Transit Center. That's kind of the focus of our needs we looked at. So we took that to the stakeholders, and we showed them this, and we did, we did have some feedback that some thought that it might need to be extended a little further Down Valley to the Brush Creek Park and Ride, since that's a major intercept lot. We do feel like the Ruby Park Transit Center is a proper termini in town, because that's where a lot of the buses are going, as well as a lot of pets are going. So that makes sense. But we just weren't sure about what your thoughts were about Down Valley, how far to go, if you had an opinion on that, or if you maybe wanted to narrow it up a little bit more.
And is that part of a greater question, or just a standalone?
No, I think it's just a standalone question for you all, if you had any opinion or thoughts.
Yeah, and I think it is part of the greater question in terms of next steps, because that, yeah, that discussion is related, frankly, to a new EIS, so.
I would say, and we'll see if there's council concurrence, that the Brush Creek Intercept Lot is one of our alternatives and tools we have to be able to use to reduce the amount of congestion or single occupant vehicle travel and things like that. It also is what involves our neighbors and the commuting visitors and workers from Snowmass Village in the 2 and and workers from Snowmass Village in the to and from there. I think that that is well worth looking at, but I think the greater discussion about moving forward into an EIS versus alternatives such as reevaluating the preferred alternative and seeing if that leads us into a supplemental EIS or the need for a full new EIS. And I think that that discussion has a lot to do with this board discussing and hearing from you more about purpose and need statements and what they entail and what would be the difference between, for terms of input and pardon the word, control that Aspen may demonstrate in a reevaluation of the preferred alternative versus should we go to a new EIS and over 50% of the system users don't live anywhere near Aspen, and yet they will have equal or greater weight in the outcome from that based on C-DOT metrics, that EIS is determined by the input of the many users as opposed to just the end destination. Does that seem appropriate, that we should look out to the airport, excuse me, to the Brush Creek Intercept Lot with either, really? Sam?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Thank you. Brush Creek definitely makes sense to me. I do think there are like two points that make sense. One, the other one being the airport, especially where two goes into one and one goes into two, as far as where the bus lanes end and begin. And obviously, just with everything going on with the airport redevelopment, the lumberyard and the ABC, but the Brush Creek, I guess, is more all-encompassing. So if there's no harm in that, then I see it all being acceptable, as long as it's acknowledged that the airport area has a lot going on there, too.
Yeah, yeah. It's interesting that the original EIS area ends at Buttermilk, roughly. And, but yet it's meant to be connected to the larger system. John and then Bill?
I think we should be including Brush Creek for sure. It's the main entrance to Snowmass, and I think that affects. Be interested to know how that breaks down our traffic. And while EOTC is also talking about greater connectivity for bicyclists from the park and ride to the ABC and then into town. So it's all encompassing, and again, I think we should be. And thanks for bringing up the airport, Sam, because that is part of, it's all linear, and the airport brings a lot of traffic into town, too. So, yeah, let's look at the larger picture, please.
Bill?
Agree with all those statements by John and Sam. The only sort of new color I would have to add is, I'm not so sure that the Brush Creek Park and Ride or Intercept Lot needs physical changes, but it is obviously an important component to the sort of transit solution and traffic problems that we have. So I'm not sure that I, maybe there's some minor stuff there, but that's not where, I wouldn't look at physical reconfiguration as sort of the primary goal there, but more about how that's an important piece of our puzzle.
Yeah, there's been, as most or all of you know, we recently expanded the Brush Creek Park and Ride under a separate project. And so a lot of the discussion I've heard, Mr. Guth is, you know, looking at users of that park and ride. Are they in fact, you know, on raft to buses, or are they using it to carpool? So we plan to pose some questions to Rafta, trying to get at some of those questions, as well as other park and rides down Valley.
Thank you. Good question, Bill. And that actually brings up something that was in the early recommendations from the mobility study that was done with the Institute and others. And that's really truly enforcing the HOV lane. That does encourage people to make the effort and, you know, a little bit of discomfort or whatever about carpooling and picking up strangers or picking up other people. And we really have no HOV advantage going forward right now. I've heard some discussion that if we were in a reevaluation of the preferred alternative, that might be something we could discuss with the federal partners of whether it could be some HOV vehicles, if we had true enforcement, using the transit lanes as opposed to only bus only. But I don't know if that's really, would open that door or not. It just seems like it might be a potential to. Years ago, as we first started working on all these transportation issues, we had kind of said, hey, buses are great and they do a lot, but they're not the only alternative, and that they probably would be well-suited to be augmented by people carpooling and using HOV vehicles as well, to encourage anything that discourages the SOV. Christine?
One thought, given that we're diverting 30% of our traffic at Smithway to McLean Flats, I'd consider extending all the way to that intersection. The traffic starts backing up there in the morning. It's pretty dangerous, and that seems like the appropriate place to extend it to.
That's a good point, Counselor. The county is pursuing a project to redesign that intersection. So we'll touch base with them a little bit more to see exactly what their plan is. And if, I think it's subject to a grant approval, though. So we did talk about maybe calling to Smithway, too. But they did mention they were going to try and reconfigure that intersection themselves to help with that queuing problem.
And I'll add that if a new EIS were started, or even with a reevaluation, it's not uncommon for our traffic model and study area to be broader than our actual EIS project limits. So, you know, I feel confident that we would encompass that area. And, you know, the question becomes, are improvements needed there? Or the diversion is happening because of the problems on State Highway 82. So if you fix those issues, does it take care of part of that problem? Are there physical improvements needed down, Down Valley in that area? Or is it just more of a problem with 82 and the immediate ETA area?
Good comment, Christine. It's very true. I've heard from a lot of people saying McLean Flats is turning into a highway, and the impact on Cemetery Lane is significant as well, with people saying, I can't get out of my driveway, you know, in the morning because there's so many cars coming in on Cemetery Lane. So very, very true. John?
Yeah, I've been having people send me screenshots of the traffic and the map, and it shows both Highway 82 and McLean Flats backed up almost to the top of Smith Hillway. So, yeah, I think the improvements that the county's making at that intersection are basically based on safety, because it's got a high collision rate there. So the new intersectional, there's still going to be some side swipes and stuff, but it's, I think, a Michigan turn or something. Anyway, I think there's still going to be people turning off there, even with the improved intersection and using McLean Flats.
Yeah. But appreciate your comment that we would look at travel patterns and how any result from reevaluation of the preferred alternative or new EIS would look at what it affects travel patterns outside of the actual project area.
Yeah.
Do you have a next question for us?
Now, we had one or two follow-up slides in closing.
Okay.
So just some information on some upcoming meetings. We are scheduled to have an EOTC briefing on the 15th of next month. It's really intended to serve as a report out on the pre-NIPA tasks, a lot of what you've heard about this evening, and also to serve as a listening session regarding similar items, project limits, needs, and goals. The Transportation Coalition has asked us to present to them. Their steering committee has asked us to present to the larger group, and that meeting is slated for the first of next month. And, you know, some of, Michael Miracle was at our stakeholder workshop, and so he saw a lot of the slides that we just presented to you. So he's asked for, you know, a very similar presentation. We'll call that down and then talk with the steering committee. We are due to have a touch point with C.DOT and FHWA to let them know some of our findings on transportation needs. And we are scheduled to return to you, City Council, on the 24th of June. And at that time, we would present, as planned, a draft purpose and need statement and request your direction on next steps.
Okay.
And related to next steps, the next two slides just show, you know, two of the options. And as we've been talking about, a new EIS would involve developing a new purpose and need statement for your review, as well as C.DOT and FHWA's. If we opt to advance it, it would be, it would require city funding authorization. And if approved by C.DOT and FHWA, the new EIS is warranted. That would involve them rescinding the rod and initiating, issuing a notice of intent to start a new EIS. And as we've talked about, another option is to proceed with a reevaluation of the preferred alternative. Also, it would require funding authorization, consult with C.DOT and FHWA. There are some, Counselor Rose, I know you had some questions that you posed to staff, and I'd like to touch on those as part of this slide. But just to finish up, we would look at any modifications needed to the PA and affirm with C.DOT and FHWA that those are appropriate within the confines of a reevaluation and look to initiate that reevaluate. To the questions that were directed at staff, the reevaluate process does allow for modifications to the PA. And, you know, the guardrails are essentially, as long as it's a modification to that preferred alternative versus introducing a new alternative or an alternative that was studied previously. So some of the discussions that we talked about last year with council were changes to the platform width. And, you know, we'd also presented an interim solution, which is allowed within the PA and the rod, that would have a narrower platform width. Also, there was a question about whether the duration or length of time since the record of decision would just by itself necessitate an EIS. And the short answer to that is not, technically. And C.DOT and FHWA have indicated several times that the reevaluation is valid. The rod is valid, excuse me, the rod is valid. What the reevaluate process essentially would do would be to look at updated conditions to confirm that that previous decision that was made in 1998 is valid, based on existing conditions, updated traffic, everything else. But, you know, what we have said in the past is, an argument could be made to C.DOT and FHWA that just, you know, because of the length of time since the rod, that that, you know, could be reason to reopen the rod and issue or initiate a new EIS. But the length of time by itself doesn't render that record of decision or the PA invalid. So does that address the questions you posed to staff, Mr. Rose?
More or less. I guess it, if I'm hearing you correctly, it just means a new EIS is not completely necessary. You, like, a September or third meeting, you thought it might be, just by the age of things, or the scope of the rod changing, like light rail being off the table, cut and cover bridge and whatnot, significant changes, per se. Thought that might be cause for a new EIS. And I guess what I would want to get at is, are we inevitably going to end up with a new EIS? Are we wasting our time with a reevaluate? Does a reevaluate do a good job of leading into an EIS? Does it solve traffic congestion? Like, you know, I think one of the reasons why people have such issues with the PA a lot of time is that it solves some problems, but it doesn't solve a lot of the problems people are looking for. So are we just delaying the inevitable? Nobody here wants to kick the can down the road anymore. And I think, at least I, want to just end up with the best possible solution that science says will solve the problems that we're looking to solve with community values input in there as well.
Yeah, and that's the tricky part, science with the community values. But the, yeah, the technical answer is, again, just because of the passage of time and the duration since the rod, that doesn't by itself mean that the rod is invalid. To advance to a next major phase, which would be final design and ultimately to construction, right away acquisition if needed, C.DOT and FHWA would have to go through this reevaluation process. And it's just, you know, it's looking at, you know, based on, as I mentioned, the updated conditions, does that decision hold up based on today's conditions? And I think, so that's a process that would have to be gone through. If, based on updated environmental impacts, for example, it was determined that there are new, quote-unquote, significant impacts, that would require a supplemental EIS. That's what triggers that supplemental EIS. And the other thing I'll note is, of course, that reevaluation would be focused on the preferred alternative. And it doesn't allow for new alternatives to be, to looked at, really. That would, you know, what we presented to the council last year, you might recall, is that if there's an alternative that was studied in detail as part of the original EIS, that could potentially be addressed through a supplemental EIS. But if it's an alternative that was not evaluated in detail, and that includes the split shot alternative that got a lot of discussion last year, what we heard from C.DOT and FHWA is that would require a new EIS.
Yeah. Well, I guess I will talk about one alternative, then, that I've seen designs from a gentleman, Gary Louder, about, I think he's interactive with you, about a modified version of a split shot, and there's so many versions of it. And I've always wondered, is there a better version of that that solves a lot of the issues that we're looking to solve, especially traffic congestion? And with that, I'm just like wondering, with a reevaluate and all these different processes, like, I think one of the hardest things for me is just like, as an elected official, having to sign off on something that you think is imperfect. And that's my issue with the PA, is like, it has so many imperfections. It might be the best of the worst, or the best of the best, however people view it. But I just do wonder if there's a modified version of a split shot that solves a lot more of what we're looking for. Narrower through that corridor, no traffic lights in certain areas, actually keeps traffic flowing smoothly, has bus lanes and whatnot, gets people out during wildfires and other evac situations. Like, the only reason to go to a new EIS is if you actually believe that there's a better alternative to the preferred alternative, especially in this day and age. And I guess, going back to one main thing, is just people want to solve traffic congestion. And it's been said time and time again that the preferred alternative is not a traffic solution, it's an infrastructure solution. And just with that, like, that's why I'm concerned, how do we move forward? I'll turn to you, Mayor Richards, as far as just like.
Yeah, I was just going to say, to try to make your question a little more succinct.
Yeah.
Would trying to modify the existing preferred alternative to be able to connect traffic from Cemetery Lane into the lanes going into town through some measure, some design where you still eliminate the Cemetery Lane light, the traffic light goes away, but you're cutting lanes into to connect with the realigned Highway 82 across the Morale? Is that something a preferred alternative reevaluation could look at?
I'm not sure. And.
There you go.
But I think that answers it more that, like, I don't know if a reevaluation does the trick. I don't know if a new EIS is needed.
I understand what you're saying.
And I can add to.
And I, I mean, I don't know that our work session is set up today for the full discussion that this board is going to need on such topics. This is the update, and we'll have further discussions with the EOTC. The other side of that coin is that a full new EIS will take a couple of years to three or more years. And the primary drivers of that will be the highway users, the system users, not the destination. So I have seen previous designs, and coming from some highway engineers that have said, all we need is a really big roundabout in the center of the Morale property, and we need six lanes. We need one dedicated lane for traffic, transit in each direction, and two lanes for general traffic. And is that the door this council wants to open up? So you're really opening up to the devil you know versus the devil you don't. And a reevaluation of the PA might give us a little more insight into, would it work without? without opening it up to a, a very different solution than any of us had visualized? The idea that a new EIS would result in only Mr. Louder's idea going forward?
No guarantees, right?
No guarantees at all. And I was going to ask the question before we got into deeper comments of, how does the word "community" get defined in our memo? And I think, from speaking with others, it's, it's all highway, highway to users. It would actually include the input from people who are traveling 50 miles away from rifle and 60, 70 miles away from these sort of communities. And so Aspen will maintain more control over our community character within the PA as opposed to opening the door for other people who may or may not have the same values that you want to advance, reduce traffic.
I, I understand. And I guess I would like pose maybe rhetorically, will the PA ever solve congestion? The number one thing that people care about. And like, that's the thing that's really hard pill to swallow as far as endorsing something that I don't know if it's ever going to solve what we're looking to solve.
Well, I would, I would simply answer that there's, one of the reasons we're looking at the $18,000 grant to the transportation group is to say, what are the management measures that we could implement with any solution that should go forward? And I think one of your earlier slides said that reevaluation would be able to look at different or new technologies that replace, whether it's partially the buses or replace the light rail element. So there's a lot of things you can look at in a reevaluation. I think it would be our chance as a community to say, the TDMs, the transportation demand management measures that were instituted in the original PA have not been effective enough. I mean, the, the, the issues that we're really looking at are that we don't have enough workforce housing, you know, that's anywhere nearby, transit oriented. And we don't have a real grasp on how many jobs we will have within the city of Aspen and will need to fulfill 50 years from now. We're kind of asking our highway system to deal with that issue by default. So, again, I'm not sure this is the conversation you were expecting for us to decide reevaluation or EIS at this meeting tonight. You're just giving us this background information to discuss it. And we can continue, and, and I'd encourage you to continue to ask other questions that you'd like to for specific data or studies, but as opposed to our own thinking right now.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to percolate some thought. It was in the memo as like, especially as alternatives. All these things are so interconnected, that makes me worried that like, a PA is going to lead to induced demand, and then we're going to approve another 1A, which we never should do, and that like, we got to limit growth, and there's other things that we need to do to make sure that this community functions and there's like a small town character that needs to have. And so like, reevaluation, EIS, there's just so many other factors that go into it that if you approve a PA, you might lead to other issues, especially if you just open the door to just like endless job growth and something like that as well here, so.
So might an EIS. If you, so might an EIS. A, a new rod would be for looking forward, for a 50-year horizon. A, a new EIS looks forward to what we can expect with valley growth, valley users, every, everything, you know? This is, this is the hot seat we're in.
Then I'll come back to one thing of just like the scope of a reevaluation as far as just like, can you explain again, like, what changes can you make as far as like a reevaluation goes? Because like, part of me feels that reevaluation is just going to be like one last little like, we did what we could, and like, now it's time to move on sort of situation. So what, 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 can you, like, what, could a reevaluation help with congestion? What sort of like changes can you make? It, it doesn't sound like you can add like a tunnel from cemetery lane over, anything like that. It, it sounds like you're kind of just like doing a checklist item, but like, the, it's baked already, is how it feels. And I don't necessarily know if that's true.
Yeah, I can, I can touch on South Bridge. Before I answer that question, in terms of the performance of the PA, I will mention that, you know, as part of our work from last year, we did look at different traffic metrics, and we did what we called at that time an alternative sensitivity analysis. I touched on it earlier. And we compared the PA with the A version of the split shot. There are a lot of versions out there, right? Along with the three lane shifted. And we looked at performance, relative performance on several different traffic measures, the extent to which they reduced transportation, improved transit travel times. And I think the upshot, if you were to pull up those results, and they're in that traffic memo, is that there's not one silver bullet or great solution that's going to address all the issues. They all have trade-offs, all those different alternatives, and some perform better with different metrics than others. The split shot did have some issues, as I recall, and so did the PA. But, but, you know, that's information that is in that memorandum. To your question, Mr. Rose, I wish I had a clear answer. I think you've heard me up here talking enough that there are some gray areas involved in terms of how much design refinement is allowable to the, in this case, the PA under a reevaluation. And as mentioned before, if, if CDOT and FHWA deem that it's, there's refinements to that alternative, you know, then that would be allowable under a reevaluation. One recent example, on the South Bridge project up in Glenwood Springs, we had a similar conversation when the city got the $15 million grant, and there were some changes. This is after the NEPA decision document. And to save costs, there were changes to the alignment. Instead of going under the, the runway, you know, the, the realignment would basically take it around. And FHWA looked at it and tried to, to, you know, ask themselves whether or not that constituted a new alternative just versus a refinement to the preferred alternative. And they decided it was the latter, and we are now preparing a reevaluation for that project. So in terms of a connection, you know, maintaining that connection between cemetery and the roundabout, that's frankly a question we'll have to pose to them and have that discussion. And there'll probably be some other improvements we would bounce off them.
We'll revisit it. Thank you. It's just percolating thoughts for now.
Bill?
One question and then some thoughts and answers. One question is, I, I read somewhat recently that there might be some major changes to NEPA coming, including potential elimination of NEPA. Is there any traction on that? Any further insight you have to that?
Yeah, there, there already have been. Second day of the Trump administration, there's an executive order asking the Council on Environmental Quality, that's an office within the, the White House, to rescind its NEPA regulations. So we operate under different set of NEPA regs. For transportation projects, highway projects, we operate under, or did operate under those CEQ regs, we still do, as well as FHWA has their own NEPA regs, which are still in, in place. So not to get too detailed, CEQ has issued an interim rule to start rescinding its reg at South Republic comment now. Just last week, this was a kind of a surprise, but there had been rumors to that effect. CEQ directed other federal agencies to take steps to rescind their own NEPA regulations and replace it with non-binding guidance. So that would have less legal standing than regulations. Guidance would. Understanding and talking with our folks in DC is that that would not apply to FHWA, but that has yet to be affirmed. But in addition to those changes that are coming about new administration, there are also some pretty big court cases in front of the Supreme Court that could change NEPA. So it's, it's been changing more over the last two years than, than it has in the last two, three decades. And of the last couple of years, it's changed a lot within the last couple of months.
Thanks. You know, we've talked about this at this, last council, but the bureaucracy of this process is just mind nubbing to me and, and others. And so I ask you to keep us posted if, if any of those NEPA dangers change how we should be looking at this project and how we have to tackle this project. I, I, I think that I'm in favor of a new EIS, basically boiling it down because there's so, there have been so many changes to the built environment and so many changes sort of to the use of, of our infrastructure since this was last looked at. And, and I just don't know any way to really get the results and get at the core shoes that we're dealing with other than starting at the beginning. And I think that's essentially what we're doing by doing new EIS, if I'm understanding it correctly. So I fully respect and understand the risks that Rachel is, has thoughtfully presented. But I think we'll end up with a better result for our community that addresses some of the core issues if we pursue that process. That being said, I, I think that there's two, I know this is slightly outside the scope of this conversation, but two things we've got to keep in mind, and I think we should really be working on simultaneously and concurrently with, with whatever direction we take here. Number one is, I think that we should be allocating some time and money upgrading this existing bridge, because no matter what we do here, that's going to take a long time. I, I, I think I'm realistic in that this is a decade or more out, no matter what direction we take, no matter what solution we come up with. I think that there's a lot of legal ahead of us, there's a lot of funding ahead of us, and I want to make sure that our lifeline, which is the existing Castle Creek Bridge, continues to function at least as well as it does today until we have something else in place. So some further food for thought is, I, I think it's worth spending some money and time on that. Similarly, and I know we're talking about that next as well, in, in, in a way, I want to keep the pedal on the gas in terms of studying what we can do with the existing alignment to improve traffic flow. There's signal timing things, there's some physical, relatively minor physical reconfiguration we can do, but what can we do to improve traffic flow, marginally improve congestion with what we've got in the meantime? You know, not rely on this sort of like eventual godsend, but do something about our problem today. And so I, I hope we can all keep that in mind, is let's also work on that concurrently. Thanks.
Thank you. Christine or John?
Are you, are you asking tonight if we, what, for direction on an EIS or a reevaluation?
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll be back in June to provide some more information, but this, I felt like it was important to give you an update kind of midstream where we are. So we'll be asking that question in June.
Okay. Anything else there? Or you can, we can come back. John?
No, I appreciate the update. Do nothing is not an option. And yeah, I think enough time has gone by, and there have been changes in technology and engineering and construction that I would support. Thankfully, we're not voting on it tonight, but I think a new EIS is the direction we should be going.
Yeah. I will make my comments. I really agree with you, Bill, about looking at the efficiency of the traffic signals. I mentioned this to staff the other day. It seemed to me that Trusscott Light in particular was really out of sync in, in terms of every 15 seconds, one car would come up and the whole traffic line would stop. I think that is part of why the preferred alternative ended up eliminating the cemetery lane light. And we talked about congestion in the roundabout, but it wasn't ever mentioned that we have a traffic lane 100 yards out of the roundabout. And that does tend to stop the traffic pretty consistently for one car at a time. I have a slightly different set of driving forces with me right now. And that, in a huge way, is the wildfire evacuation risk. I, I just don't think that it's, it's a good idea to say, oh, let's study it again, maybe something bigger and better will come out of it. Because I, if the goals are remaining to control congestion and prioritize mass transit, that is, is something that I think the existing preferred alternative does. And I, Tony, I, I don't need the head shaking, but we could be submitting a preferred, excuse me, a new purpose and need statement. And I, you know, the airport is not new, and it was sold with a yes vote that it was not going to create growth. The lumberyard is a project that's within our urban growth boundary for affordable housing creation. And so that's not really new. Community character, one of our, our statement purpose and need items, is not new. If anything, it's been degraded in other areas because of the congestion. And it's spread to Castle Creek, it's spread to Cemetery Lane, it's spread to other characters. The, the difference, that is the biggest difference that a purpose and need statement would have to capture, is Aspen no longer houses a very significant portion of its own workforce. And highway construction doesn't really solve that other than wider and bigger lanes. You know, so I, I don't know that we would, without saying that those are the lanes we want, become something that would give them a new purpose and need. I mean, we could submit a new purpose and need statement and find it rejected by the friends who say, go back and look at the PA first. And I would hazard a guess that a new EIS would take longer than the decision makers of at least three people at the table today, perhaps all five, because those are very lengthy processes. And it would involve our other neighbors far more vigorously than it has in the past. And I, I think that that is not necessarily something those who wanted to preserve most of the Morale were really in favor of, or, or other things like that. I think there's real, real challenges. And if there's anything I heard during the past three and a half, four months of this community's election season, it was, please, no more studies. Please do something. Please advance it. How many studies have we had? How many different times have we looked at this? And I don't know that the forces of Mother Nature and drought are going to hold off for another decade or more for us to make up our minds. And so I, I would see a preferred alternative reevaluation, as I understood it from your past work, saying it would be a six to eight month process. And a new EIS is a two to three year process. And it's a 52-card pickup in terms of what might come out of it. So that's kind of what my concerns really are, is to see something happening sooner than later. I'd love to take a look at, can we make it neighborhood residential traffic only in the West End instead of making it the bypass to Highway 82? All the traffic driving right by our childcare center has, has bothered me for years. But I think that, again, back to the study group, the Transportation for the 21st Century, the hope there is that you can really find the tools that would manage traffic congestion, whether it is on the preferred alternative or would be an augment to some other program in the future. And we'll be making those decisions later. Can we all get copies of this slideshow emailed to us and obviously sent in the record? I think it's something that should be sent to the county commissioners, although you're meeting with them separately than us, or just at the EOTC presentation?
Just at the EOTC, and we will be happy to send you the slide deck.
Okay. I think they'd probably like to take a look at it before the actual meeting, because that, that gives people time to think about things. And I appreciate you working with Michael Miracle and that group to let them look at all these numbers. Sam, closing comment?
Sorry. Yeah, just wanted to say like, we don't need to decide this till June 24th, we have a new EOTC meeting in the meantime. I just don't know if a reevaluation is not, is just another strategy of hope, or whether it actually is going to lead to more consensus. And I do feel like, I hear the risks of a new EIS, and I'm waiting till June 24th to make any decisions. But I do know, at least in my heart of hearts, that whatever that produces is the record decision, and people just need to accept it at that point. One of the things in studying this that drives me a little insane is that back in like 2001, when like the ref two sort of vote failed on use, use of the Morale open space, I've always felt like, in hindsight, they should have gone to a new EIS then, or at least that's how I interpret it. And that's why I'm always so frustrated now, that like, if you're going to say no to something, you got to say yes to something else. And you're like, push comes to shove, you got to make a decision at some point, we're running out of time, but this might be our last opportunity to go to a new EIS and get something that's more modern. So I hear everything you're saying, we'll wait till June 24th, but those are, that's just like my thought process and why it makes me nervous to go to a reevaluation if that turns out to just be another study. And the new EIS is something that's supposed to produce the result.
Well, again, just since we're.
Sorry.
Back and forth a little, Sam, a couple of things. One is that, and I didn't address Bill's comment, and I had meant to, FHWA and NEPA may change their priorities. their priorities, but the Colorado Department of Transportation has its own priorities as well. And so we may see changes at the federal level, but that doesn't mean Colorado has lost its interest in controlling greenhouse gases or supporting mobility and transit in the top three goals of their projects. So there is that. And with a new EIS, we'll have a different administration before it's done anyhow, one way or the other. So administrations federally change frequently, and some of the changes we're anticipating now might change with the midterms, we don't know. So I think we have to go forward on our path of what's best for our community and community safety, separate from that. And then, what was that last thing? Finally, I, I, when you say, when there's a new record of decision and then it's done, that is until there is a federal lawsuit entered in by whoever didn't like the outcome. And that's what happened with the last EIS as well. And that the funding mechanism was, for real, was, you know, pushed onto the ballot prematurely. But the, it can be the never-ending story, because people can see that the preferred alternative, the record of decision, didn't adequately consider some factors, or didn't adequately consider the, the highway users from rifle, or didn't adequately do this. So you don't quite get the surety that you think you're getting.
Yeah, no, thanks for elaborating how impossible of an issue this is.
You're welcome.
Couldn't agree more.
You're welcome. And thank you both for your presentation and for everyone else who listened through this. I see some RFTA people here to talk about the fare free, so you know what else we're dealing with up here. Thank you again, and we'll take care.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome. Now we have the Transportation Coalition request for funding. I had tried to ask if folks wanted a longer and full presentation. We have received some emails from the board who are requesting this work. I think they've asked that Christine and I be the delegates to that organization. They are, taking I think the feedback that we wanted them to move quickly, quite seriously, so they're having two meetings in May and hope to have some results for the 21st. The comment from that group that I took most seriously was that regardless of whatever infrastructure is in place, that you will need congestion management and programs and mobility options in order to make it work. Is there council support for moving forward with this $18,000 grant request?
I support it.
Okay.
Yes.
I support it, but would like to make a couple of comments on it.
Okay. Let's hear if there's support around the table and everyone can make comments. Christine, and yes?
Yeah, I'm in support, and like you said, serving on the coalition, so.
Yes, and I was just curious, when do they meet, and when are you guys?
They're meeting May 1st, I think at the CMC Center. I, I really don't know their context as to whether they feel they're public meetings or not, but they're having two county commissioners and people from Snowmass Village and other elected bodies as well.
Yeah, and I mentioned this in the phone call as far as just, um,
I missed it, I didn't hear a call from you, sorry.
Oh, no, no, when we spoke the other day and you asked me about this, it was more of a, just wondering what they're going to spend the money on, and like a little, a little more detail. I know it was in this packet, but just some more.
Yeah, they, and I really don't know, John had sent a memo today to say, these are the requests we've made from other people, we're not sure that they're committed yet. I imagine it's facilitation and communications and some amount of bringing in some expertise and subjects. That's, I, I can't answer that more fully.
Okay, hopefully they can get back to us with that, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So I'm, I'm in support of this mostly out of respect for the people behind it. It does give me some indigestion to, to be funding something sort of out of the, out of the ordinary and out of the, maybe way it should be, but maybe that'll deliver good results, especially given who's, who's involved here. I'm certainly hopeful that we get some new ideas and some encouragement to implement some of these ideas to improve traffic congestion. All that being said, I, I, just because it was easy to get approval today, I don't want to invite continued requests for funding, either from this group or other groups. We have spent a lot of money on many similar sort of initiatives and studies that others may want to do, and so I don't want to be redundant, and I don't want to be wasteful. I think all that was worth saying, but I think, I'm excited about what might come of this, I'm optimistic about what might come of this, I respect the people behind it, I totally understand the frustrations which are driving people to do this, and I am hopeful that we see something great come out of it.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree with your comments. I do believe this is kind of a continuation of the work that was funded by the city and the county and others in 2018, was it, or something like that? The real challenge is then the boards being involved enough to adopt it. And that's why HOV enforcement never really occurred, and it should have, and that was one of the, the low-hanging fruit. And I don't know if the ideas such as developing a rideshare app are more affordable than they were back then, and developing programs are a little more affordable, and whatever new ideas are coming out. But I do appreciate we're having significant support and participation, contribution from the ski company and, and other partners. So I think it's well worth moving forward with, and do we need a, a formal vote on that, or you have council?
Can't take any action during a work session, so really.
I just needed that direction to be able to proceed with.
Okay, so we, we have a full board support.
Yeah, so for clarity, this is within the city manager's spending power authority. I think because of the nature of, of what this coalition is proposing, we just, you know, we just needed to see if there was support for that.
Okay.
But I, I don't think any formal action is needed on your behalf, because it's within his delegated authorities.
And it was explained in our memo that we have transportation fund availability for this, we will face some future challenges potentially with the transportation fund, but at this time, it's, it's well within reason. Okay, thank you. That will move forward. Our next item is the RFTA Free Fare Project, and I believe we have some spokespeople here to come up and talk to us about it. I also had pulled this from my packet and would pass it around, it's very simple, not in-depth reading, but if you want to take a look at that. Bill, this is a project you've been excited about for a long time, so why don't we come on up, whoever is presenting? Good evening, Lynn.
There we go.
There we go.
We did not bring a slideshow for you tonight.
That's okay.
We have a memo in your packet that discusses the option for partnering with RFTA on this Free Fare pilot, and I have my friend David Johnson with RFTA here with me tonight to answer any questions you might have.
And I have my friend Mike Yang here. He just, he just showed up.
There we go. Well, as your new RFTA board reps, Bill and I heard about this for the first time ourselves, and I know it was, again, a driving interest of ours. It is scheduled to be in the fall, so that RFTA has the capacity to be able to offer that before the winter season. It is something that requires replacement of the lost fare revenue, and I believe our packet showed that that totals and other, other elements to implement the project equals about $550,000. I will defer as we discuss this as to whether we should ask our council for 225 or 250 would, and then we're hoping there would be then equal match from the EOTC of their funds for, get you to the balance, and maybe you could round up 50,000 from other communities. You can let me know how those sort of commitments are going. I'm going to turn it back over to you, and I would have some comments after, after you finish up.
Sure. Yes, we are planning, what we'd like to do is, is operate our service, all our fare-paying routes, that's, that's the BRT service, the Valley Local, and the Grand Hogback, fare-free, for almost our entire winter, our, almost our entire fall season. Our fall season runs roughly September through, through the end of November. We would start the service September 22nd. That, that's when the, the City of Aspen Transit, Summer Transit Services ends, and we see a pretty big drop in ridership at that point. So September 22nd to roughly November 22nd, that 62-day period, that's when we have lowest ridership and the most available capacity to support fare-free service. And last year, at about that same time period, we had about 260,000 trips. We will, we, we think we will see an increase in ridership. We're projecting 30, 40%, and we, and we base that projection on, it was fortunate, the state of Colorado supported fare-free, fare-free service during the summer months for other transit agencies as part of, I think it was called the Zero Fair.
Ozone Reduction.
Ozone, the ozone reduction. We didn't, we didn't take part in that because that is our peak time, as you know, and we just could not support fare-free service at that time. But we do think we can support it at this time. Last year around this time, we had 260,000 trips with the extra maybe another 100,000 trips, so it would be 360,000 trips that we, that we're going to forecast. We won't know until we do, until we, until we give it a try, but we think that we'll have three, about, about that much generated by fare-free service total.
Well, I think it is a very good experiment, because at least, there are a lot of questions that are unanswered right now, and it will give us some insight as to how much more capacity we would need if we were doing this in the on-seasons, in the busy seasons, particularly parking spaces and the various park and rides, and drivers and the number of buses. And the real challenge ultimately at a fare-free level is, do you have more money to do that additional capacity and have those drivers and have the equipment to continue to keep up with demand? It's not so much, you know, it, it may sound like a small number of a $5 million or so annual to make up, but that would be a number that constantly climbs. And it does mean you don't have the type of money you've had in the past to upgrade equipment and replace older equipment, things like that. So that balance of being able to create new versus just barely maintain will come up. I would particularly like to see us, if we can create some sort of fare-free pass that, you know, can be issued to people, similar to the bike share program, so that we're able to track who's using it, who's an increased rider, and be able to maybe reach out to them after the fact, if they're not getting employer passes, that we could offer them a reduced fare for a winner pass, or something like that through Aspen. So how we can follow up with the gains made, I think is going to be really important to us at the city level to think about this. But those are the major things I've thought about is, and this was discussed at the RFTA meeting about, well, we have counters and we can count how many people get on the bus, but if they're really just the same people who are already getting bus fares and buying a pass, we haven't gained anything. How, how do we get to new riders? But I think it's a really important chance to get people in the mode of taking the bus. So even if they're riding from rifle to Carbondale, or from Glenwood to Basalt, and they're starting to do it for the first time, they're more likely to use the system as a whole in the future, and endorse their families to that sort of thing. And I think that the other thing we need to think about is, will we require more last-mile services if we get people riding the bus who in the past have not really figured out how they're going to get that last mile up to their, their employer or their employment? Bill, you had some comments as a RFTA rep?
Thanks, Rachel, and, and great synopsis of, of the highlights of our meeting. I am excited about this, and it's something that I've been sort of advocating for, for quite some time, with the explicit goal of improving traffic congestion. And, and that's my interest here, is, is how can we incentivize people who can take public transportation, mass transit, to do so? I found it interesting in, in the Jacobs presentation earlier this evening on some of those survey results, just how many people are in single occupancy vehicles as a percentage.
Yeah.
And it wasn't, I thought it was extra interesting that they broke out construction users, because I do think that that's, you know, those aren't always people that can reasonably or feasibly take public transit. So, you know, for me, it's all about, can we financially incentivize people to take the bus as opposed to other means of, of travel? Can we make it work in their favor for them to take the bus? Can we accommodate doing so while providing as good, if not better, levels of service as we did before? And, and I was convinced adequately by staff that a pilot program's necessary to do so, to just see, you know, is, is this going to work? Is it going to create the increased demand that we are looking for? And, and what are we going to have to do to adapt the service levels to accommodate that hopefully increased demand? So I, I encourage everyone to support this, I'm on board with Rachel's recommendation of somewhere in that 200 to 250 range. I hope that other communities that are part of the RFTA network will also contribute to this, and it's not just City of Aspen and EOTC. I do think that, that sort of system-wide buy-in is important here. I hope others see the value in this as well. I'm, I'm sort of reserving my comments for how we financially support this on a long-term basis for later, after we see how things going, go on the pilot program, but I stand behind this and encourage you to as well.
Thank you, Bill. John?
I fully support this. I think it's a fantastic idea to, as Rachel pointed out, just a great opportunity for people to finally try public transit, to incentivize to get them out of their cars. The fewer single occupancy vehicles we have on the road, the better our congestion problem's going to get. So this is a step in the right direction, and I look forward to the day when we can possibly offer it year-round.
Thank you. Christine?
Question, do you, I know it's people who are not paying for the bus right now, but do you have a sense of who this missing rider is, a profile, like who we're trying to get on to RFTA right now? What's the target audience?
You know, Christina, I, I don't, all, all I know is that, that people are price-sensitive, and, and going from, you know, a fare to fare-free is, could be, is a significant incentive to some people. As I said before, we were fortunate that, that some agencies have tried the fare-free service for about the same period of time, some of our peer agencies in Colorado, thanks to the, to the, the fare-free ozone program. They did it during the summer months, and that showed a 30 to 40% increase in ridership going from a fare to fare-free. But in terms of those particular profiles, no. What I, what I, what we've seen in elastizia models is people are, you will, we'll probably see more acute ridership increases during peak hour, you know, peak hour, peak direction. People are very much incentivized to use the, to, to travel during peak hours, and maybe a little bit less during those off-peak times. Well, you know, unfortunately, that, those times when there's a little bit more capacity, a little bit more seats to fill, you know, during those, those very off-peak, off-direction hours, probably maybe a little less. But that's, that's part of the reason why we're, we're doing this program. We want to, we want to see what happens all, all across that service day.
Please.
Hi, yeah, thanks, Christine. Just contextually, this is one of a solution that RFTA had identified as part of its climate action plan. We completed a climate action plan, I think, in 2022, and it took an assessment of RFTA's greenhouse gas emissions, and RFTA's largest, based on RFTA's operations, the largest portion of our operations that emits greenhouse gas emissions is our fleet, just running up and down the valley, our buses. And so our primary component of trying to address that is trying to transition our fleet away from diesel gas. fleet away from diesel gas. And so while we have, have, you know, while we look towards making progress on that plan as a whole, you know, those fleet replacements, you know, are coming whenever the buses are due. And so, so we plan to have 10 more battery electric buses on order, hopefully in the next, this, this year. The second, the second component of this climate action plan, while we're waiting to do our fleet replacement, was to look and see what opportunities we could have under our control to see how that improves our, I think, basically getting more riders on buses, it's the mode shift, getting more riders on buses. So we don't, like, as David mentioned, we don't really have it, we're not targeting anyone specifically, we're trying to see how free fares could move the needle. And one of, one of the pros with this pilot is to get, to obtain information. And I think that's the part we have, we've never, well, we haven't done this, and there's been a lot of interest in it with some of these, like, programs at the state level to fund. Unfortunately, because of, like David said, we don't have capacity during the peak seasons because our buses are already standing room only during, during the peak times. That's why we targeted, in order for us to try this, we're targeting a time where we do know we have capacity, it happens to be in the off-season, right? And I think that's the part where we, we, we don't anticipate needing to run more backup buses because of this, but there could be situations where there are standing room only on some, some of the trips, but the only, the only way we'll know is if we give it a shot. So I just wanted to share that context with you. That's why we're not really targeting individuals or, if you recall, the last fare change RFTA made, I think we made a dollar fare for kids. And I do want to comment about the, the last time RFTA tried a fare-free, it was because of the Grand Avenue Bridge Project. If you recall, there was a goal by CDOT to reduce cars on, on the state highway, and RFTA participated with a support from a lot of communities to offer free fare. And I know that that had opened the eyes and, and reduced barriers for people to try transit for the first time. And I know that right now, our hogback service is one of the largest, is one of the routes that we have where there's the highest growth of ridership. So it will be interesting to see how a pilot project like this could have impacts, but we recognize it's during the off-season.
I'm glad it's in, or starts in September, because that's a little bit more of a realistic time of year for commuter traffic or who might potentially get on the bus. And just one thought, when you give people something, a benefit, and then take it away, there can be pushback and angry or upset customers. I'm sure you've thought about it, but it's something to manage in terms of communication. But I'm in support of the grant as well.
Bill, do you want to interject? I can go after.
If you don't mind. Just a couple, one, I wanted to answer Christine's question in one way that I've been thinking about it. I think that there's a lot of different answers to your question, but the way that I think about it is sort of like a group of two coworkers or three coworkers that generally have the same schedule, that are commuting from, you know, name your spot down the valley. And right now, the economic equation is in favor of them carpooling, not taking the bus. And, you know, maybe if it's four of them, let them carpool, but like with two, it's not really helping that much with our traffic congestion issue. So, you know, if it's $5 each way for each of them, you know, $20, may as well take the car as opposed to taking the bus. So if we make the bus free, I think that's the sort of putting that $20 back in their pocket that, that might create the mode shift, and that's how I've been thinking about it. And then secondly, I just want to reiterate, I mentioned this during the board meeting, but we got to start marketing for this thing as soon as possible. Let people know that this is coming. Give them time to mentally prepare for this trial and mode shifting. Be creative and funny about it, you know? Do we put, and, you know, I would support this on city property, but can we put signs that are saying, "Are you frustrated sitting in traffic right now? Try the RFTA fare-free pilot program." You know, advertising inside the bus doesn't do us any good. Those people are already on the bus. But being creative, thinking outside the box, and it's not just newspapers, we know only a small segment of our population reads the newspaper. So we got to be creative, we got to sort of put this out there in different ways, and we got to start that effort now. Thanks.
Well, they want to start as soon as they knew they had the money.
Fair enough.
Totally fair.
Yeah.
I also support this tooth and nail. I think about when you spend government money, you spend it for the common good, and this is, epitomizes the common good as anything we'll ever spend money on, and could be such a crowning accomplishment if it actually turns into something bigger, which I hope it does. As Bill sort of mentioned, there's no incentive, like economic incentives, and I was really struck by the projection you guys had of your increased ridership. It made this such a no-brainer, as we talk about congestion being the number-one issue in the entrance to Aspen. We can spend a quarter of a million dollars at least initially, and then maybe more, it's going to be such an incredible return that we get for doing something like this. So that, that is such an amazing feeling and such good policy, which is exciting. And then with that, just like some things to, you know, look after, I would love to know the numbers on people, the destination and origin, where Aspen is their destination or origin. I'm sure you know that.
I have that.
No, I know, but like, especially when it's fare-free.
Yeah.
Because I, I'm sure we're going to be tied economically to this, so like knowing, paying our fair share and then some, I think that's going to be important, knowing those numbers. I know you have them already, but I'm talking about when it's fare-free. And then just like another thing to like look back at the council at is just, RFTA in this tool of public transportation is so valuable for so many issues we have going on here. And, you know, this is really good money spent, and if we can help RFTA with other things, like housing bus drivers and what they need to be as fully functional, fast, safe, reliable, less standing room only, those are things that I'd be very interested in. It's unfortunate because it's a regional coalition, it's not just the City of Aspen, but as far as like problems we talk about every day, RFTA can solve a lot of them. So I would very mu, very much be in favor of looking into helping them with housing and getting more bus drivers and getting more buses out on the road, because that would be a huge benefit to so many things that we are concerned about here. So very exciting.
Thank you. A couple of comments, I appreciate and generally support most of the comments I've heard. I think it'd be important to find a way to look at what is truly the capture from this experiment versus the kind of inflationary gains you've seen this year over past years, especially coming out of COVID. So we're not, you know, I think ridership is up about 5% kind of across the board already, and so I just don't want to count that gain that we saw during the fare service with the free fares compared to last year. So we, I want to make sure we do that. There absolutely was discussion at the RFTA board meeting about how to, and it was Jeanne McQueenie from Eagle County who said, "Look, you know, taking away a benefit afterwards, you have to be upfront from the very beginning that this is an experiment, and we'd love to be able to continue it, but make sure it's understood when the fare is reinstated." I really do agree with the promotion idea, and I think we can think about things we might be able to do here outside of RFTA and do kind of add-on. You know, I'd love to be able to, you know, hand out some gift certificates to Aspen restaurants, to new bus riders, or different things like that, and engage in the community and support the community at the same time. You know, when RFTA was first expanding back in the day, we offered the service free to Glenwood Springs, and it was an introduction to Glenwood Springs that this is worthwhile. And you always run into kind of counter arguments at the time was, well, now we're going to have to play our Glenwood Springs workers more because you're taking them all up to Aspen. But once they saw the transit benefit and that the buses coming home on Friday brought a whole bunch of paycheck's down to Glenwood Springs, it kind of evened out. And so I think this is well worth it. The two other last things I'd like to, to just kind of mention is, there is a great article I forwarded to some people, perhaps not all, others out of Bloomberg, about a city in Toronto, Brampton, Ontario, that radically increased their ridership, and it was not fare-free, it was frequency, and that people really didn't want to wait for a half-hour in between transfers when they come off the hogback to an Aspen line, or that they could depend on the service more, being literally almost every five or 10 minutes in a lot of destinations and things like that. So I don't want us to hang our hats just on this one idea, is this is how you get more ridership, going to more locations where people want to go, more frequency, seating room, the capacity, these things are what get people on buses as much as fare-free. And so we have to bear that in mind. And the last, Sam, I do have to say, I don't want us to start going down the right route of choosing employee types and them benefiting from our housing dollars, you know? I think that, you know, the childcare facilities in the school district and the hospital and everyone else would talk about what vital services they provide to all of us and problems they solve for the fire department and sheriff, so that this is important. But RFTA is a taxing entity, it has its own sales and property tax base, and it's up to that board to budget accordingly to be able to work on those issues. But if we have a project that you guys want to be a partner and help bring some RFTA money into it, I think the door would be open. We got to look to all the partners we can for our housing goals, but not, not to favor one over another with any of our, our housing opportunities that currently exist. So I need someone to say how much they'd like to put in, 200, 250, 225?
Mary Richards?
Yes.
I can draft a resolution and have that brought back to the council at a future meeting, and we can leave a blank, and then you guys can make a decision at that meeting as maybe the preferred alternative for that.
Well, I think, again, the most important element on this is that RFTA does have a drop-dead date of May 15th. They said they might be able to push it to the day after our EOTC meeting on May 15th, but we, we will need to make a decision, because it takes a lot of prep work, and I'm hopeful, but I have no idea how much the EOTC itself will want to put in. I think as, as our board at that meeting, we can certainly push for that. I do think our RFTA reps, Francine and Mr. Poshman, sounded very supportive as well, and so that's great to bring that back in a timely fashion before May 15th.
Yes, and I think the council's kind of given a ballpark figure, maybe that it's comfortable with, that RFTA can kind of benchmark from.
I'm thinking 250. What do you think?
Oh, I was going to comment, try to comment on something you had mentioned about data collection. So May 15th was our internal deadline with our vendors to move forward based on the project team's plan, plan. So, and I don't believe there was part of that plan, some sort of technology on how to capture data from riders who don't necessarily, aren't paying anything, they're not buying a pass. So that's something that I'll have, we'll have to talk internally with our team to see what, what options are there, what kind of cost there is with that, and then, but I do recognize that that adds to the, to the schedule. And so I believe in the write-up, that if, in the event that we're unable to identify those funds for the fall season, for the two months, that the fallback plan would be to...
Push it till spring of 2026.
Push it to the 26 budget planning process, and try to take either that same concept and apply it to both of those off-seasons, possibly. Again, work through the budget cycle, have more time to have those conversations, and have, have more time to work through some of those, those details about, especially with the data collection, if that's a key component for the, for any, as a funding partner.
It seems important that we get some data out of the experiment in some way. So, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a $550,000 experiment. We've got to do more than just read the tea leaves of, oh, we had X may more people on the counters, you know? So it would seem that perhaps the people who, you know, sign people up, have some outreach, we'll, we'll think about that. We'll let you, let you guys think about how best to, to capture this increase. People who already have a season pass from the winter, perhaps you could just issue them a renewal pass that's, that's free, you know, and this is your fare-free pass, we're giving it to you as a bonus for having your winter pass, and now you have it for the next two months, and then a way to capture the data from new riders.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I'm not sure if the, some of the agencies that we had spoken to who did the three-month pilot in the summer, if they, if they captured their data, but that's something we'll, we'll have to check in on.
Okay, thank you, and we'll try to help you if we can. Anything else on this side? No?
Thanks.
Okay, very good for that. Council, if it's okay to take a five-minute restroom break, and then we'll finish up the rest of our agenda. It's okay? Thank you, grassroots. Okay. Well, let's move on to the next agenda item for today. And we're almost done for the evening. Discussion of council retreat dates. Pete, do you want to take this one away?
Sure. So, prior to this meeting, I had sent out a message to council members that there were two blocks of dates that we were currently holding. And hopefully you all saw that. So far, those blocks are May 19th and 20th, and then again on June 16th and 17th. We were trying to get a litmus test from the council if those dates will, any one of those dates will work at this time. We are anticipating like a day and a half to a two-day session with the council members. Is there any major conflicts?
Uh, Phil?
Thanks. Last time we did it in one day, three-quarters of a day. I cannot afford a day and a half or two days towards this. I don't think it's necessary. But I am available the 20th of May or the 17th of June, but not the May 19th or the 16th. I cannot and will not do two days of this.
Okay. Well, we do have a new council, and you were not really a new council the last time you did this. And it seems that even just tonight, we're talking about some really major discussion items. This will be helping our staff form the 2026 budget and future budget out years and projects that go forward. I'm hopeful we don't have to deal with issues such as a recession affecting us, but we're seeing an awful lot drop of international travelers to the U.S. for a variety of reasons, and other people's portfolios shrinking in such a way, they might not spend the same that they used to. So, this is something that as council members, we all get a relatively significant salary for the time we do put in, including health insurance. I think it's important to try to find a way to make time to participate fully.
Okay. That doesn't change my position.
You said day and a half. Can the other half be evening? I mean, for what it's worth, like if it has to be two days, we'll do two days. I'm fully committed here. But if it's a day and a half, can the half be like a work session up sort of situation?
Who's the "we"? Are you speaking for yourself?
Sure. I, sorry. I don't know. "We" as a council, can we do, if we're doing a day and a half, can we as a council do one evening and a day versus like two, having to take off two workdays? That's really the question I have is a pseudo-compromise.
Well, we could do a day. I would see more of a full day first and an evening afterwards.
Sure.
But then maybe a day in the following month or something like that, if we have items we need to continue to hash over. There's just a lot going on, I think.
I'll do whatever it takes. I, you know, we are getting into some changing times right now with the federal government. Sorry. And I agree, this might take a little more time than it has the last two council retreats I've been part of.
Okay. Well, let's try something else. I think that the 19th and 20th to start would be, I want to see if that's some availability there because we would already normally have a work session the evening of the 25th and then take off all day the 20th?
Sorry, you just said the 25th.
Excuse me. No, I thought I said, starting with May, the 19th would already be a work session night.
Yeah.
And so, we could dedicate that and have it a longer night, and then have a full day on the 20th. How would that work for folks?
Two thumbs up.
Works for me.
Works for me. Okay. Because the sooner the better, I think.
I agree.
In terms of being able to start delving into all the issues. So, we'd be starting at 4:00 p.m. and perhaps have some dinner brought in and be able to go later that evening than a traditional work session.
I'd be happy, I could start as early as 3:00 if people want to move it up an hour.
I cannot on the 19th. That's my conflict time on the 19th. But I can do the work session, or what was meant to be the work session.
Okay, so 4:00.
So, you can do it at 4:00?
I can do it at 4:00, but I cannot do it.
But we could do it a little later, though. Would you be able to stay to, say 4:00 to 8:00?
I'm hopeful, you know, I just think that there's diminishing returns the longer that we spend time on this. And, you know, the more that our facilitator can help us prepare in advance, the more efficient we can be during the time that we have together and more thoughtful. So, I don't think that this, the results of this will be measured by how much time we're spending in there. The results of this will be measured by how much everyone's contributing, how much focus we have. So, I really just don't know how this will take two full days, but yes, I am available.
We're no longer on two full days. So, let's be clear there. I think it's just important for everyone to have time to express their opinions on a number of very challenging and daunting topics that we'll be facing. Pete?
If I can take that prompt, which I appreciate, we can certainly reduce the time on the second day if the council determines that it's made its progress that it's desiring. So, there's opportunities to shorten that potentially on the second day. And then also, leading into this timeframe, obviously, we would like to partner the facilitator with each of you and have a little bit of one-on-one time with you. That might, again, help kind of bring out some of the issues that folks want to talk about. So, this is a little bit of a tighter timeframe, but they're committed to making that happen. If you all can work with them in scheduling, we'll have them reach out to each of you and coordinate that so that we can get everything moving and start pulling out kind of the hot topics and bring those up to the top of the list to have conversations around.
Okay. And so, we'd be 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on the 19th. And you're suggesting starting at like a 9:00 to 4:00, or 8:00 to 4:00 and leave early if we finish by then? What type of, how many people are morning people?
I'm a morning person, but I got a lot of obligations in the morning. So, 9:00 is the soonest I could start.
Okay.
For works.
9:00 is perfect.
9:00 to 4:00. And is that, you think, sufficient time?
Yeah. I mean, again, I think this is, this is the council's retreat, so we are flexible to make whatever works.
If we end up with too many things on the butcher block left, we'll find another meeting time and, or use a work session for some more of it.
We'll give this feedback to the facilitator, and I'm sure they can help craft kind of the process to get through in that timeframe.
Okay. Very good. The other thing that was on our agenda for tonight's discussion is discussion around council meeting times and duration. And the only one I've really spoken to about this was Bill. I had heard from another staff member that there had been some mention about, should we start earlier in the day at like 3:00 and try to end by 6:30 kind of as a standard for our work session? This isn't about our regular meeting days. But how would people's schedules feel about doing that instead of what seems to, you know, sometimes they're very short work sessions. We all know that. But some tend to go on to closer to 7:00 from the 4:00 time. Would 3:00 to a goal of 6:30 be what you were talking about, Bill?
Well, I'd love to see them more in the two-to-three hour range rather than the three-and-a-half hour range, which you alluded to. And I also was referring to the regular council meetings, you know.
Well, we were talking about how to make those more effective as well.
Right. But, you know, could we start those at 4:00 as well? I think, you know, what I've experienced in the last two years is just, you know, by the time it hits 7:00 or 8:00, the brain power is collectively declining quickly. And, you know, we're not serving our community the way that we should be. So...
I would not want to move a regular meeting beyond 5:00 start because of public comment. And a lot of people have to work, and it's hard to get off before 5:00. And if you can get off 20 minutes early to come over and be here for that, that's a lot. And so, I think 5:00 has been a traditional meeting time for decades. And I try to save a little my brain power for the Tuesday nights, you know, knowing that we are going to have serious business to discuss. What, let's stay on the, and I am, again, as Bill alluded to, trying to work on ways to make our regular meetings more effective. And so, one of the key ways to do that is if you have questions about consent item agendas, to try to get those questions into staff on Monday morning so they can take a look at that and try to answer. You can ask the questions again publicly, but let's not try to keep them off-guard and things like that. And we'll try to be more effective with the consent items. It's when six out of nine are pulled, and pulling to make a special thank you to someone who's there or acknowledgement or things like that. That's not what I'm talking about. Just in terms of understanding the issue or letting staff know if it's, or let me know if it doesn't really feel prepared, we can pull it off the agenda entirely unless it's, you know, time-sensitive. So, we are working on making the regular meetings more effective. How do people feel about starting at 3:00 and going to a targeted end of 6:30?
I would have a hard time regularly doing 3:00, 3:30. I think I could more or less commit to with my job, but 3:00 is pushing it for me.
Okay. John?
I'm flexible, but I'm perfectly happy keeping it just the way it is. But if the quorum decides to move to 3:00 or to 3:30, I'll go along with that.
Okay.
Yeah. There's upsides and downsides to both of that for me as well, so...
I know. And I'm trying to think about the people who have children at home and families to get back to and dinner.
Yeah. I've written off Monday nights, so we're good.
And sometimes work sessions do go longer than any of us would like. So, the hope of starting them a little earlier. If there's not enough consensus around it, we can just keep it as-is. But, you know, then starting at 4:00, it's more likely to go to 7:00 sometimes than leaving at 6:30.
I would say if you set the agenda and you feel like it's a very jam-packed work session, maybe feel free to move it to 3:30. But otherwise...
No, we got to have something consistent.
Okay, then 4:00. Then leave it as-is. But, yeah.
Anybody, again, are there any stronger feelings? Or, Bill, you want to make a better argument for 3:00?
3:30 would be great, but if this is causing more challenge for people than benefit, then leave it the way it is.
Okay. We're leaving him at 4:00. And we can revisit this later in the year, too, folks, after we've started working together a little more. Okay? I think that's the last. Pete, did you have anything new for us to think about for tomorrow night's meeting?
I don't have anything new. As Rachel said, there's opportunities to let us know if you have any questions on consent or any other issues. Just reach out. I think sooner the better for us, and we can prepare staff to have some responses to those at the meeting if possible.
Very good. Thank you very much, and thank you, Grassroots TV. Appreciate it.